Originally scheduled for August ninth. We'll go ahead and first item on the agenda is approval of this afternoon's agenda, any revisions or updates? Okay. We have a motion to approve that.
Also move.
Second, Rose.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Agenda is approved. Then we'll have the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on July 12th, any revisions? Discussion on those minutes?
This is Tros, I'm going to approve the minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Minutes approved. Um, we have the financial report for June, please.
This is Schrader with staff. So this financial report puts us through the end of the fiscal year. Uh, and on the revenue side, as you go through the different categories, some of them are above a hundred, some of them are below a hundred. Uh, and the grand total was at ninety-eight percent, so really close. And on the expense side, looking down through the subtotals in the categories like ninety-one percent, eighty-one percent, ninety-one percent, ninety-one percent, eighty-three. One area a hundred and thirteen, a hundred and six, they didn't have an overall average in there, but it's about ninety percent, so. Uh, we were really close hitting revenue and under on expense, so looks good.
Any questions for staff? If not, do we have a motion to accept the financial report?
So moved, this is Parrish.
All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, financial report has been accepted. Uh, next item on the agenda is time for oral presentations, this is for anyone who's in attendance, who's um, here to speak on an item that is not already on the agenda. Is there anyone here in the chambers here to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, and do we have anybody else on phone or zoom? Okay. Alright, so then we'll move on to new business. The time is four oh three, and this is the time set for a request by the city of Waterloo to rezone five acres from A1 agricultural district to M1 light industrial district to M1 light industrial district located east of twenty-one thirty-five commercial street. Um, at this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, I Patty McGee do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, overview map, aerial map, and notice map were mailed to the individuals on the attached list on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Could we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second?
Second, life to go.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First, we'll have the staff report, please.
And it should be noted, the notice letters were recent out on August eighth when we had to cancel, change the meeting.
Thank you.
This is Dornoff with staff, the applicant is requesting rezon property in question for future development. Their quest would not appear to have a negative impact in neighborhood as it's surrounded by industrial uses to the south and west and the Cedar River to east and north. Request would not appear to have a native impact on particular pedestrian traffic movements in the area. The area, the area served by commercial street which is classified as local street. And there's no sidewalks in the area, majority of property is owned A1 agricultural district, having been zoned since being rezoned from U1 unclassified on June fifteenth nineteen ninety-eight. The remaining portion is owned M1 light industrial district, zone as such since the adoption of zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Surrounding land uses and their zoning to the north to Cedar River is owned A1 agricultural district. To the south, industrial and commercial is owned M1 light industrial district. To the east is Cedar River is owned A1 agricultural district. And to the west is industrial and commercial is owned M1 light industrial district. The future land use map design necessary is industrial and the proposed rezoning would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan of future land use map for the area. The applicant is requesting to rezon approximately five acres from A1 agricultural district and M1 light industrial district to allow for future development. The property in question is surrounded by other commercial industrial type development and the property is located west of the Cedar River levee, therefore there will not affect the Cedar River or the floodplain. A portion of existing M1 area is being included for the rezon to create for easier legal description. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by the city of Waterloo to rezon approximately five acres from A1 agricultural district and M1 light industrial district um, to M1 light industrial district located east of twenty-one thirty-five commercial street be approved for fine reasons, their quest would not appear to have a negative impact on surround the area, their request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. And the request is in conformance with the future land use map for the area.
Any initial questions for? John? Anyone else here from the city?
No.
Alright, is there anyone um, else in the chambers here to speak on this agenda item? Okay, and just to confirm, there is no one else on the phone or by zoom that's here to speak on this agenda item? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Tros. Motion to close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion from the commission?
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation by the um, city of Waterloo to rezon approximately five acres from A1 agricultural district and M1 light industrial district to M1 light industrial district located east of two twenty-one thirty-five commercial street. And that this be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area, nor a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for the area.
Second that?
Second, life to go.
Okay, any discussion by the commission? If not, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next item on the agenda, oh, the hearing, the time is four oh nine PM and a hearing is scheduled at this time for a request by Mike Kamenzide uh, doing business as Kamenzide Masonry for a site plan amendment to the M2P planned industrial district to allow for construction of a ten thousand eight hundred square foot office slash warehouse facility located north and east of twenty-five ten Levercy Road. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, I Patty McGee do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, overview map, aerial map, notice map, and drawings were mailed to the individuals on the attached list on August eighth, twenty twenty-two, we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file.
So moved. I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried and we'll have the staff report, please.
This is Blank with staff, the applicant is requesting to construct a new ten thousand eight hundred square foot office warehouse for a masonry contractor business east of twenty-two ten Levercy Road in the Waterloo area in Real Park. The request to construct the office warehouse facility would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area as it would appear to be compatible with other proposed industrial development in the area. The area is the area in question has been zoned M2P planned industrial district since June ten June seventh, two thousand and ten, when the land was rezoned from A1 agricultural district. Surrounding land uses and their zoning designations are as follows, to the north is vacant land zone M2P planned industrial district, to the south and to the east is vacant land and airport zoned M2P planned industrial district. And to the west is residential and vacant land in the city of Cedar Falls, it will be necessary that a stormwater detention plan is submitted as well as a SWIP to the engineering department for review and approval. The proposed request would not appear to have negative impact upon drainage in the area. If, if proper stormwater detention techniques are put in place for the two proposed drainage ponds. The applicant is requesting to construct a ten thousand eight hundred square foot office warehouse with four bays for a masonry contractor business, a gravel contractor yard will be located to the north of the building, the area in question is zoned M2P planned industrial district. And the zoning is designed to permit the establishment of industrial parks and to provide for the orderly planned growth of industries on large tracts of land and allow in greater flexibility and diversification of land uses and building locations, it is also intended that such industrial parks be developed to maximize the potentials of industrial areas and at the same time minimize any adverse effect upon adjacent properties in other zoning districts. The zoning ordinance requires one space for every two people employed at the facility, the site plan shows five parking spaces and meets the parking requirements by only having four bays and three to four employees. A plot has been submitted for this area as part of another request. At tech review, the fire department noted if vehicles were stored inside the building and larger than GVW of ten thousand pounds or the building is over five thousand squares square feet, a sprinkler system and alarm will need to be installed. The fire department also mentioned aerial access will be needed depending on the height of the building. And a turnaround will also be required for the fire department access, engineering department will need a site plan that includes stormwater information. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Kamenzide Masonry for a site plan amendment to the M2P heavy industrial planned industrial district to allow for construction of a ten thousand eight hundred square foot ware office warehouse facility located east of twenty-two ten Levercy Road be approved for the following reasons. The request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area, the request would appear to have a positive impact on traffic conditions in the area as this will be another addition to the industrial park. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area and with the following conditions, the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage setbacks, et cetera.
Thank you. Any initial questions by commissioners? If not, is someone, is the applicant here or someone on behalf of the applicant here that wants to speak to the commission? Anyone on the phone or by zoom? Okay. Anyone else in the chambers who is here to speak on this agenda item? Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. We have a motion from the commission.
This is Commissioner Tros, uh, make a motion to approve the request by Kamenzide Masonry for a site plan amendment to the M2P heavy industrial district to allow for construction of a ten thousand eight hundred square foot office warehouse facility located east of twenty-two ten Levercy Road be approved with the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screenage, drainage, setbacks, et cetera.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the commission? Okay, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is request by Summit Locations LLC for a special permit to allow for a three hundred and forty square foot billboard in the M2 heavy industrial district located at thirty fifty Wagner Road, you have the staff report, please.
This is Dornoff with staff, the applicant is requesting construct a thirty-two foot tall, three hundred foot square foot billboard located approximately two hundred feet northeast of West Airline Highway and Wagner Road intersection. The proposed special permit would not have a negative impact on um, the surrounding area and there is no other billboards in the vicinity. Um, the special permit would not appear to have a negative impact of figure or pedestrian conditions in the area. The area in question is on M2 heavy industrial district is on such since the adoption of zoning ordinance number twenty-four seventy-nine in nineteen sixty-nine to the northeast and south industrials on M2 heavy industrial district to the west is industrial and George West State Park um, zone M2P planned industrial district and M1 light industrial district. The future land use map does necessaries industrial and proposed special permit for a three hundred square foot billboard would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan of future land use map for the area. The applicant is requesting a special permit to construct a thirty foot, thirty-two foot tall, three hundred four square foot off-premise billboard at thirty fifty Wagner Road, the proposed billboard would have signs on both sides and the signs would be static and not digital. Zoning requirement, requirements requires that the billboard structures shall be, not be within a thousand feet of each shother and um there are no, there are no other billboards within the immediate vicinity. Um, the zoning ordinance requires that all districts were permitted C2, C3, M1, and M2 um, excluding corridor overlay districts, billboard shall have a prime message area not exceed three hundred square feet. Billboards may exceed three hundred square feet for unique and site characteristics including but not limited to setbacks surrounding land uses, structures, spaciousness, and visibility. Near requests over three hundred square feet must follow the procedure for applying for a special permit. Um, and get approval, um, get a recommendation from the planning program is on the commission and onto the board of adjustment for final decision. Uh, the maximum allowable height as measured from the natural grade at the base of the sign to the top of the structure is forty-eight feet. And there will be a minimum ten foot clearance from the natural grade at the base of the sign to the bottom of the structure, the seventeen by twenty sign will be thirty-two feet high and there will be um, fifteen feet between the bottom of the sign and the surrounding grade. Should also be noted. They did have to, they did change the location of the sign because the original location of the sign was over a sewer easement and so the sign was moved to alleviate that issue. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the special permit to allow for three hundred square, three hundred forty square foot billboards in the M2 heavy um, industrial district at thirty fifty Wagner Road be approved for final reasons, their quest is in conformance with the comprehensive plan of future land use map for the area. So as could not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. Their quest would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area.
Any initial questions for staff?
I have a question, is this an electronic kind of billboard that changes?
It's not digital, no.
Oh, okay, it's just static, whatever. Because I read in those letters, I appreciate staff forwarding to us. That sounded like it was gonna be non-profit.
Yeah, that's on the other request, so.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I had a quick question, Commissioner Tros, um under the staff analysis zoning ordinance, it talks, it discusses uh, three hundred square foot maximum and they have to apply for the special permit when it's over that amount. And they're applying for a three hundred forty square foot sign. It talks about um they can remake this request for unique site characteristics including but not limited to setbacks surrounding land uses and structures, spaciousness, and visibility. Um, did they provide, was there any specific recommendations based on any of those qual- qualifications that would make it qualify for a, for a special permit for a larger size?
This is Schrader with staff, so I'm not sure if there's an applicant on that can address some of that, but I would say from staff's perspective, uh, we would uh, look at the location, uh, surrounding uses and then also um, because of the sewer line that was in there and the need for them to push this thing um, fifty-four feet back off of the right of way line and that's the right of way line, there's, you know I don't know how much, this is a pretty wide right of way, probably another forty, fifty feet from the right of way line to the edge of the road, so this thing is back there quite a ways, making visibility more challenging if they would stick with a three hundred square foot sign.
Okay, thank you.
Is the applicant either on by zoom or phone or here in the chambers?
Yes, I am, right here.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi, I don't know if you heard that question from Commissioner Tros and if you wanted to add anything additional, please introduce yourself as well.
Oh, yes, my name's Wesley Rutledge with Summit Locations, I'm calling in from Ohio. Um, so I spoke to Seth Heiburger and we didn't really talk much about, you know, visibility or, you know, those things you just mentioned setbacks. Um, I do see I have the location pulled up on Google Earth. And um, around the proposed sign, there is a um, there's one business. There is a auction, uh, a big auction business. And then there's just some trees on the other parcel, so it's mainly just, I think it's just a big M2 industrial district. And um, we did talk about, like you guys mentioned, moving the sign back because of that sewage line. He said that we would have to be fifty-four feet from the property line and were more than that, the pole is farther than fifty-four feet. The leading edge of the sign is at fifty-four feet from that property line, so. Do you guys have any more questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for? Alright, is there anyone else on the phone or by zoom or in the chambers here to speak on this agenda item?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Dave Boson. Hey, can I, can I ask why the app, the application in this packet is blank?
There was an issue with the PDF, every time I tried to insert it it would not print out. And the other copy we had was in such bad shape, it wouldn't, wasn't readable anyway. This is the filled out one, correct?
Yeah.
So, this is Schrader with staff, apparently the original PDF version we got had some formatting issues that uh, kept causing it to uh, hide the inserted information, but we do have one on file that's properly filled out and signed.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this agenda item? Okay. Do we have a motion from the commission?
I'll make a motion that we accept the request for a special permit to allow for a three hundred and forty square foot billboard in the M2 heavy industrial district of thirty fifty Wagner Road. And we approve it for the following reasons. The request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area and does not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on any of the surrounding area.
Do we have a second?
Second, life to go.
Okay, any discussion by the commission?
So if this gets approved um, is above the minimum, the, the maximum without coming to this commission for special permit? Uh, but then at this point, does it go on the board of adjustment, is that correct after this?
This is Schrader with staff, yes, um, they're requesting the three hundred and forty square foot billboard, so if uh, the recommendation um, were to be approved by the commission, it is just a recommendation, it would then go on to the board of adjustment, it would have the final say on approving the three hundred and forty square foot billboard.
Thank you.
Any other discussion by commission or questions? Okay. All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the request by Lamar Advertising for a special permit to allow for construction of a three hundred seventy-eight square foot billboard in the C2 commercial district located west of a hundred and twenty-five East Tower Park Drive, we have the staff report, please.
This is Dornoff with staff, the applicant is requesting construct a forty-five foot tall, three hundred seventy-eight square foot billboard just west of one twenty-five East Tower Park Drive located along East San Martin Drive just east of the intersection of Kimball Avenue. Request for construct the off-premise sign would not appear to have a negative impact surrounding area and would appear to be similar to all, to other off-premise billboards located uh, in, along the St., East San Martin Corridor. The proposed special permit would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular pedestrian condition, traffic conditions in the area. The site in question is adjacent to East Tower Park Drive which is classified local street and East San Martin Drive which classified as a minor arterial, there are no sidewalks in the area. The area in question is zone C2 commercial district and zone as such since the adoption of zoning ordinance thirty-two forty-three on September twenty-seventh nineteen eighty-two when it was rezoned from A1 agricultural district. Surrounding land uses and their zoning to the north is East San Martin Drive, East San Martin Frontage Road, commercial and professional office, zone C1 commercial district, North Three Multiple Residence District, to the south is commercial, zone C2 commercial district. To the east is commercial and professional office, zone C2 commercial district. And to the west is commercial, Kimball Avenue and professional off fifth zone C2 commercial district and C2C CZ conditional zoning district. The future land use map does necessaries commercial pro special permit would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan of future land use map for the area. Commercial uses can include retail uses, neighborhood commercial uses, or professional offices. The applicant is requesting a special permit to construct a forty-five five foot tall, three hundred seventy-eight square foot off-premise billboard west of one um, one twenty-five East Tower Park Drive. The applicant noted that the west face of the billboard would be digital display, the east face would be a norm, a static display. The applicant previously applied for a special permit to allow for construction of a six hundred seventy-two square foot billboard and while the planning program is on the commission had recommended approval of the request at their May tenth, two thousand twenty-two meet regular meeting, the board of adjustment denied the request three to one withhold them in voting against the denial at, um, at their May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. The owner of the current site of Verding Credit Union, Bob Crow um, was present to voice opposition to the staff and staff received an email from the owner of one twenty-five East Tower Park Drive in opposition prior to the May twenty-fourth meeting. And you um, step, the commissioners were also given the um, Mr. Crow and um, the owner of the medical center also sent in new letters for this request and you were forward those along with um, a letter from Mr. Weber from Lamar. Also at the meeting, the applicant noted that they can change the digital programming from a six hundred seventy-two square foot billboard to three hundred seventy-eight square foot billboard pretty seamlessly. However, the change of programming to a size different than that um, requires special reprogramming. Um, the ordinance requires the billboard structure shall not be permitted within a thousand feet of another billboard structure and off-premise sign measured in any direction along both sides of the street which joins the billboard structure measured from the base of the structure to the base of the structure regardless of grade. There are no other off-premise signs within the immediate vicinity. The maximum allowable height as measured from the natural grade to the base of the sign and the top of the structure is forty-eight feet. Um, whether there be a minimum of ten foot um, clearance from the natural grade, the base um, of the sign to the bottom of the structure, there is a twenty foot, twenty-eight feet between the bottom of the sign, the proposed sign and the surrounding grade. Um, the law in question is used for drainage and the proposed sign would not have um, be allowed. The lot in question is used for drainage, and the proposed sign would not be allowed to interfere with existing drainage detention facility. The site submit, site plan submitted by the applicant shows the sign would not be in the area of detention facility, but it was located near the top of the bank. Their proposed billboard would not appear to be blocking any existing signage. On the medical office to the east has their signage to the east side of their building, over 195 feet from the proposed site. The car wash to the west has a sign approximately 11 feet tall at the bottom and 16 feet at the top. This sign would not appear to block viewing, as the bottom of the sign is 20 feet, 28 feet at the bottom. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Lamar Advertising for a special permit to allow for construction of a 378 square foot billboard in the C2 Commercial District located west of 125 East Tower Park Drive be approved for the final reasons. The request would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic condition in the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area.
This is Commissioner Wilber, so our recommendation today goes, similar, goes on to the Board of Adjustment.
Correct, they are the ones that have the actual decision making.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other initial questions for John from commis, the commission?
Commissioner Trosen, so on the, on the sheet, number 40, page 49, yeah, page 49, it shows a 10 foot setback and a 20 foot setback. I'm assuming that's on the San Moran.
Correct.
And that is the precise location where they want to locate the outermost boundary of the sign, is that correct?
Correct.
That's not the pole location, that's the outermost boundary setback.
That would be where the pole would go. Or no, sorry.
It's the outermost boundary of.
The pole's half, about halfway. Yeah, about the middle, so.
Yeah, we can't leave her both side off the pole, okay. So it's the outermost boundary towards San Moran side is the setback, okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Is someone here from Lamar?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward and introduce yourself.
My name is Tom Weber, I represent Lamar Advertising. He said that I had sent a letter out, did you all get a chance to read that? Okay, then I won't go through the whole thing, it's, it's, is rather long. I did want to touch on a couple of things. Mr. Crowe said that he's confident that no other business owners or tenants in the San Moran Corridor would want a billboard. I looked from Ainsborough Avenue to Hammond Avenue, the businesses in there, and these are the ones that currently advertise on our billboards. Quickstar, Green State Credit Union, Heartland Bank, Lincoln Savings Bank, Farmer State Bank, Casey's Culvers, Community Motors, Perkins, Menards, Cedar Valley Primary Care, Cedar Valley ENT, Cedar Valley Eye Care, Cedar Valley Orthopedic, Cedar Valley Pelvic Clinic, and one of the letters of opposition is from Cedar Valley Medical Specialists. Those last five that I mentioned, in the last eight years, they've advertised with us to the tune of $120,000. So they obviously see the value there. As soon as the letter from the city of Waterloo went out to neighboring property owners, the Furniture Row called us and wanted to reserve a spot as soon as that sign is built. People need the advertising there. And you just approved one for the Summit Advertising. I don't know exactly where theirs is from the road, but I looked at it and it was about 100 feet from eastbound traffic and 115 feet from westbound traffic. Ours is 130 feet from eastbound traffic and 190 feet from westbound traffic. So the conditions that need to be there for a special permit, I think, are obviously there, with quite a ways. And this, oh, it's up there now. This photo, the Cedar Valley Medical Specialist sign is down here. I don't see how in the world our sign could possibly block theirs. And by the way, this mockup was made for the last time we were here for a 672 square foot sign, so it would be smaller than our mockup. We're asking for 378, which is 78 feet above, above the 300 foot, that's about the size of two pieces of plywood. So we're not asking for much, we think we've made a, a very large concession. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Any initial questions from the commission? Any of the commissioners, Cody, you, you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me take the phone and by Zoom first, anyone on phone or by Zoom here to speak on this agenda item? Okay, anyone else in the chambers here? So I'll have you come forward and please introduce yourself and give your, your address as well.
John Pollak, I'm co-owner at the car wash that this sign is going next to. I have basically one question. When they're constructing this sign, how do they plan on getting there?
We'd love the applicant come back up to answer that, so do you, did you have any other questions before?
No.
I don't know if you can put up the one with the property lines on it? There you go, before it starts sloping, there's plenty of room for a pickup truck to get in there. We planned on using a large crane from the back of the property to lift everything over, and all we would need to do is get a pickup truck in there. If we have to get a bigger truck, we should still have room to get the bigger truck in there before it, it slopes down into the, into the water retention area.
He's going to have a crane clear out there on the street?
On the side next to the street, yes, not on the street, if we can help it. If we need to get permission to get it on the street, then we will, our crane operator will ask for that, but that's, that's their specialty, not ours.
Did you come from the Tower Park side or the San Moran?
The Tower Park side.
I can say the overhead electric probably would.
Right.
You on the San Moran side.
I mean, we've, we've had to go much farther than that, it just, it takes a larger crane. But yeah, we just lift everything from farther away. And if, I mean, if you would have a problem with, with some of that, we would be happy to pay you to use your property to make it easier for us. That, we'd be happy to do that, if we could work something out with you. We realize it is kind of a stretch, and it is a huge inconvenience for us, but we'll do it that way if we have to. But, you know, if we could work something out with you, that'd be great.
Consider it were reasonable, but at this point, I do not believe there's room for a pickup truck to drive through there. I have.
Can we have you come back up to the microphone, just because we have people on the, the call on Zoom too, thank you.
There reasonably isn't room for the pickup truck to go through there. Mowers have a hard time going because of the slant on the grade, so it's almost tips over the mower. In fact, this summer I talked to the guy who does mow that property, and he doesn't like going in there, and won't go down hardly, all the way down in there because it'll tip over his mower. And as the car wash owner, what they're gonna do, whether, whether they say it or not, they're gonna end up driving right on our property and doing this, because it's really easy and convenient. And then they'll track mud, and we'll end up getting, having to clean up all the mess. Because it's right next to our property, and then also they'll park trucks right there, which will interfere with our business. I just want you to know that we are definitely opposed to that, so, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this agenda item?
My name is Buzz Anderson, I'm the property owner of the whole thing out there. Used to be a farm, been in the family for about 90 years. Used to own part of All Stop, by the way, that turned out to be a bad deal. They have the car wash, and Veridian, and the whole thing out there turned out to be kind of a mess. I don't know what Crowe is, is doing. Seems like there's some underground things going on there. I wish I had known about this, I was asleep at the, the pump here when they had the first one. You guys are the good guys, it's the Board of Review. I made an agreement with the Lamar people, who are very nice people, a year ago, and we kind of procrastinated and didn't get it done. And if it had been done, none of this would have been going on. That electronic sign is a, a beautiful thing, there's three of them in town, I think. They were gonna give free advertising to the city of Waterloo, Irish Fest, My Waterloo Days, all that they could put up, to your birthday, whatever, and they're a good, a good business partner in Waterloo. They pay taxes, I don't know if you read all that letter, everything they did is a positive. I don't know exactly what's going on, I'm sorry about missing the first deal, I don't know if they could resubmit, if there'd be a waiver for six months, but that, the big sign was great, and he's right. Furniture Row, and I've talked about three people, Community Motors, Ardeal, Frame Shop, all kinds of people were gonna advertise on it. With an electronic sign, you can do it for a day or a week, you can have six things on in one day. With the other, it's there for 30 days, and that's it. I'm, I'm sorry that this slid through unbeknownst to me, because I feel guilty. It would have been done a year ago, and they're, they're good people, and we had an agreement. And it's all this stuff about blocking and this and that, I could complain about the car wash dripping over on our land. But I think there's three or four people that are trying to undermine this for not a good reason. So I don't know if there'd be any way to do a waiver on that six month thing, so they could have a sign. They could, they could put anything you want up there. It's a positive thing, Lamar is a positive entity in the city of Waterloo, they're good people, and they pay taxes, and all this other stuff, to me, is negative. And like I say, we've, we've owned the land forever. I owned that land, and, and we turned it over to the All Stop people, and that turned out to not be quite the right thing. I had even thought about talking to Veridian. Now, they're moving across the street, I don't know what Crowe thinks he's gonna do there. But the sign is not a negative thing to anybody. I think it's a positive thing, it's a good thing, it's revenue for the city, and you're, you're only approving this extension now, which is a small thing, maybe they can resubmit, but just the 78 extra feet, to me, is a small item. And I'm sure they'll be, they're not gonna track up and have dirt and everything in, in somebody's backyard. It's the first time I've heard that one too, but anyway, that's my input, and I'm sorry I wasn't here for the, for the first group. You're, you're the, the positive group, it's that Board of Review evidently. I think somebody got to them, but anyway, I say what I think, okay, there you go. Been around for three generations in Waterloo, it's nice to see good things happen. We have a, a thing going on right now that people are opposed to, that Philip might be aware of, and we're trying to get good things done, and for Waterloo, and that, that's, anything that's, that's a positive thing should be considered, and not nitpick on the negative part. Thank you for your time.
Anyone?
Well, I was just gonna ask Tom if he wants to address the thoughts on concern for vehicular access to the site. I brought up a street view image, I just thought you should address that.
I don't know if there's any way that we can make this contingent on us cleaning it up, you know, if we make a mess, because it would be after the fact, but I can say to you that we will clean it up to his satisfaction if we make a mess, and if we can come to an agreement with this gentleman to use his property if we can. If we can't, we will do it from the street. If we have to wheelbarrow concrete in there, we'll do it.
I mean, do you think you can drive a truck through this area here?
Yeah, we have four wheel drive trucks, I mean, you know, even if we have to wait until it's dry and go down in there, we can do that. But, or frozen, but we can get it done without driving on his property, like I said, if, if we can come to an agreement with this gentleman and, and make it worth his while, that it, you know, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this agenda item? Do we have a motion from the commission?
This is Trosen, Commissioner Trosen, I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion to approve the request by the city of Waterloo for the, am I on the wrong one here?
Yeah.
I am in the wrong one.
By Lamar.
I am in the wrong one, I apologize, I went too far here.
I'll make a motion to approve the request by Lamar Advertising for a special permit to allow for the construction of a 378 square foot billboard in the C2 Commercial District located west of 125 East Tower Park Drive be approved.
Do we have a second? Okay, any discussion by the commission?
I know it came through the commission before, a much larger size, 600 and something square feet, it's nearly, you know, 40% less than that. Keeping in mind, the thought, you know, it did cross my mind, it's still above that, but they wouldn't have to be here if it was 300 square feet. So if it was slightly less than what they're asking for right now, they could just go ahead and do it. And I have to weigh sort of the percentage difference between what they're requesting and what the maximum would be allowed without coming here, and it's, it's pretty close in my opinion, I know it's a subjective call, but that's why I made the motion.
With the 1,000 feet, where would be the next closest, where, where could another billboard be placed? Do you have a sense around that?
This is Schrader with staff, so 1,000 feet east of the proposed billboard would put it somewhere at least to the car dealership, at the. Community, right? And the 1,000 foot is measured along the frontage of both sides of the road, so like even a billboard on the south side of a road, you'd go to the north right of way line and measure 1,000 feet that way too, but, so on or east of the community or on or west of the far west side of where Veridian is now building at the former Burger King site.
Any other questions or discussion items? Okay. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
No, as long as it's clear.
Okay.
Just, just the one no vote, correct?
Cody, you were, you were voting for the motion, correct?
Correct, that was an aye.
Okay.
And is Janelle on, I got a text that she might be joining by Zoom. I don't.
So motion carried, so this will go on to the Board of Adjustment similar to the last round. So our, our action here today is a recommendation, and they make that final.
Next Tuesday, the 23rd, 4 p.m.
Thank you to everyone who spoke to the commission. Okay. Next item on the agenda is request by the city of Waterloo for the preliminary and final plot of the Waterloo Air and Rail Park 3rd Edition, a replat of Track B of Waterloo Air and Rail Park 1st Edition in the M2P Planned Industrial District located north and east of 2510 Levercy Road. We have the staff report, please.
This is Blanco Staff, the applicant is requesting to subdivide for the development of a industrial.
of eight industrial lots east of Leversee Road. The request for the preliminary and final plat will not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. It would appear that the proposed industrial uses would blend well with the surrounding area. The area in question has been Zoned M2P Planned Industrial District since June 7th, 2010, when the land was rezoned from A1 Agricultural District. Surrounding land uses in the zoning designations are as follows. To the north is vacant land, Zone M2P Planned Industrial District. To the south and to the east is vacant land and airport, Zone M2P Planned Industrial District. And to the west is residential and vacant land in Cedar Falls. The applicant is requesting to develop eight lots for industrial uses at the corner of Leversee Road and Warp Drive. The size of the lots range in size from 1.24 acres to 5.15 acres with an average lot size of 2.58 acres. Each property shows at least one 30-foot drainage easement. The preliminary plat contains a legal description, property lines, with dimensions, date, North Arrow, scale and owner, sanitary sewer location, size of individual lots, and street names. The final plat contains legal description, property line, dimensions, date, adjoining subdivisions, easements right-of-way widths, and proper land sequence. A deed of dedication and engineer's certificate of survey will need to be submitted. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by the city of Waterloo for the preliminary and final plat of Waterloo Air and Rail Park 3rd Edition, a replat of Track B of Waterloo Air and Rail Park 1st Edition in the M2P Planned Industrial District located north and east of 2510 Leversee Road be approved for the following reasons. The plat will not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The plat will not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. And the plat will create additional development lots and with the following condition, that a deed of dedication is submitted prior to the final plat being sent to the city council.
Thank you. Any initial questions from the commission? Anyone on the phone or by Zoom have questions? Or want to speak on this agenda item? Okay. Do we have a motion from the commission then?
I can make a motion to approve the request by the city of Waterloo for the preliminary and final plat of Waterloo Air and Rail Park 3rd Edition, a replat of Track B of Waterloo Air and Rail Park 1st Edition in the M2P Planned Industrial District located north and east of 2510 Leversee Road for the following reasons. The plat would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Plat would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. And the plat will create additional development lots with the following conditions, that a deed of dedication is submitted prior to the final plat being sent to the city council.
I will second that. Life to go.
Okay. Any discussion by the commission or questions? If not, all those in favor state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. So next, we have the re-adoption and changes to the City Limits Urban Revitalization Area to extend the program for another five years and add provisions for both in-home and commercial daycare facilities.
This is Schrader with staff. So originally, back in 2011, the city of Waterloo adopted the City Limits Urban Revitalization Area, an incentive program that provides a three-year tax abatement on the increased taxable value for the new construction of either a single-family home or a two-family home building. The original approval was for five years. The, or actually, the original approval was for three years, and then it was extended for five years. And now that is up. We are looking to extend the approval again for five years. And there is a proposal to change the wording slightly to also include new construction additions, remodels for licensed daycare facilities to also be able to take advantage of the tax abatement program. So the entire proposed plan was included in the packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I think this is a, a good plan. We really do need more facilities to take care of young children throughout our community.
Does this group, what is our responsibility, I guess, with this?
Yep, so the provision for Planning Commission roles and responsibilities includes general plans and studies of the city of Waterloo, and this is considered a plan, the City Limits Urban Revitalization Area Plan. And so you are making a recommendation on the adoption of this plan and this, this program to the city council, who will have the final say on its adoption.
Okay, so are we the ones, if, if we were wanting to suggest a revision to the plan, would that come out of here?
Yes, the, the, the city, before this was initially enacted, developed a, it's called the GROW Committee, to kind of review and make recommendations. And then the Planning Commission at that time endorsed the plan, as is currently on the books. And the committee review didn't suggest any additional changes other than what is proposed right here, but now it's before the commission. And yes, that would be your option to, to suggest additional changes.
So one question I have is instead of, because this, this is an abatement program, correct?
Correct. It abates your taxes so that they don't even get billed to you.
Right, so...
The, the increased taxable value.
Okay, so what about the opportunity to do it as a rebate instead of an abatement?
So the, there is, under Iowa law, there is a chapter on urban revitalization and a chapter on urban renewal. This is adopted under urban revitalization, which provides for tax abatement. Under urban renewal, which is what are commonly referred to as TIF districts, it can be either, but is more often done as a rebate. But under urban revitalization per state code, it is an abatement. So we would not have that option.
Is the CURA also a revitalization area?
Yes, they, they, they're both adopted under that same, I think it's cited right up front, I'm sure.
Has that same, has, has the CURA also had this same request for modification in the past where they incorporated licensed child care centers?
Yeah, it, it doesn't need to because they're already covered. In, so the, the CURA Consolidated Urban Revitalization Area has been around much longer. And actually, before that, the reason it has its name of consolidated is there were little neighborhood revitalization areas that were adopted separately. And then they reorganized those under one CURA Consolidated Urban Revitalization Area under that section of code. And then years later, 2011, when we looked to provide an incentive for the rest of the city, but they wanted to make that additional incentive only for new construction of single-family homes or two-family. But inside the original CURA area, it is any improvements that, uh, commercial, residential, new construction additions, remodel, as long as it increases the taxable value by a minimum of 10% for residential, 15% for commercial, and that's per state code as, as well. Then they can qualify for those. So inside the CURA, any sort of new daycare facility or an addition to an existing building or an existing home for daycare would already qualify.
Thank you, Eric.
Good question. Any other... What, what kind of issues have you seen? I mean, the, the building is great, obviously, but like, have you seen any issues in certain areas with any kind of foreclosures or things like that because of the fact that the abatement basically means that you're not paying any, the way this is designed, you're not paying any tax at all for three years, and then all of a sudden that tax bill hits? Have you seen numbers on any issues that maybe? I know some of the neighborhoods were having some issues with some of that at one point, I felt.
I guess I have not seen any numbers. I have not heard of any foreclosures on a, you know, essentially a, what, it'd be about a four-year-old home at that point in time by the time the taxes come on and you get through the three years of abatement.
Didn't Summerlin have some issues with that early on?
Not that I've heard. I mean, I certainly have heard of individuals that, you know, weren't escrowing and, and it kind of that, oh, darn it.
Right.
Moment. I haven't heard of that to a, a level of where it caused any foreclosures. Maybe it has. I, I just have not heard about that.
So is urban renewal just something completely different than this?
Yeah, so, yeah, it's a completely separate chapter of the code. And urban renewal, essentially the TIFs, is, is originally more geared towards industrial. If, it's kind of morphed a little bit beyond that. But it is for residential, unless it is what is considered a slum and blight, a, you know, a heavily depressed area. A slum and blight urban renewal can use incentives for residential. One that is not slum and blight can, but then there has to be a set-aside percentage of the revenue generated by that urban renewal into, um, not fair mark, incentivized how, or low-income housing. There we go. Couldn't spit it out.
So i- is there ability to layer? So if this covers a certain area, is it impossible for residential TIF to also be in that same area?
It is absolutely not impossible. And we do have areas that overlap, that are in both a, um, well, because either CURA or CLURA covers the entire city limits. The original CURA covers kind of the central core, and CLURA covers everything else. And yeah, the TIF districts are, you know, randomly throughout that. So there are definitely overlaps. So yes, that is definitely a possibility.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because we don't have a lot of, we don't have any residential TIF right now, do we?
Um, we do. In the areas that are considered slum and blight TIFs, the downtown TIF and what was the Logan TIF, which is now part of the, merged with the airport TIF called the East Waterloo Unified, are both adopted under slum and blight. And there have been incentives provided for various housing projects, particularly in the downtown area. There've been a lot of, a lot of housing projects that have involved a TIF Development Agreement and incentives. Use rebates, not always just rebates, but rebates is the main one.
Any other questions or, or comments by the commission?
Is there a particular action that we have to take as a commission on this? This is shared information for us this time.
This is requested for commission action to recommend its adoption by the council.
And can you help me remember exactly why you guys chose to do the three-year 100% exemption versus, because the CURA does the 10-year graduated, correct?
Yeah, in, in the original CURA, there is an option. You can either pick three years at 100% or the 10-year prorated. I don't have it all memorized, but like 80% the first year, stepping on down to 20% the 10th year. The, I, it goes back to the original GROW Committee, and there was, I know a lot of discussion on that and what incentive to offer. The urban revitalization code in the state code does require that you can't provide an incentive that's different. I mean, when I say different, like, we couldn't do one that's not in the CURA since we're doing, the CURA has two options, and at least one of those options is what, we couldn't pick something completely different. They have to at least match there. But it, yes, we could do
Both.
Both, like we do in the CURA. But that was the GROW Committee's original recommendation, and then how it was originally adopted by both, you know, Planning Commission Recommendation and City Council when originally adopted. But that would, yes, be an option, that it could be amended to change that.
Is the, does the city, or I guess county, prefer one method over the other? For record-keeping or any of that?
I'm not aware that the county has any preference one way or the other. I, I think the, the city has, I, I, I know that there's been discussion on this in the past. I, I know there's been some suggestion that the CLURA should do both, just like the CURA does. But, but I know that...
Is that a recommendation we could make today? To add to this, to add the childcare centers and the 10-year?
It is. I, I know staff is, Noel's not here today, but I know staff is recommending it as this. But, but that is the purview of the commission to recommend differently. Councilman Bozen, I know you've been in some discussions on the, the abatement provided, too. So I don't know if you'd like to add some comments?
I, I would, because originally Noel sent an email out about, about us approving the five-year CLURA. But he had also included multifamily dwellings, because this is basically a one- and two-family. I, I don't, it's not in here, so I take it he, he took that out.
Yep, this Schrader with staff. So yes, there was also discussion about also amending it to include more than just a one- or two-family unit to also then include multifamily. It is my understanding that based on individual discussions with council members, Noel did not believe there was support for adding multifamily at this time.
And I, I believe that, too. And the other thing that I just wanted to mention, and I have spoke before this commission in the past, that when I brought up the, the proposal of instead of three years at 100%, six years at 50%. And the rea-, the reason I brought that up in the past was because it, it does two things. Number one, it, it starts bringing taxable revenue into the city right away as opposed to the third or fourth year. And, and number two, homeowners don't receive the sticker shock at the end of three years. You, you'll build a house out in Otter Park and, and neighborhoods, and then you've got your three years at 100% tax abatement, and you're, you're behind, and then all of a sudden your tax bill is in front of $9,000. And the reason I suggested the six years at 50% is at the end of that six years, your, your tax bill is only going to go up half of that. And then I thought it'd be a better mix for the, for the buyer of the home, that they wouldn't be subjected to a huge tax increase on that third or fourth year. And I, I, I spoke at one of your, at one of your commission meetings a few months ago when, when that got brought up. And I, I still feel strongly about the six years at 50%. And I do appreciate that they, that you did take out the multifamily. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Real quick, and, and this Schrader with staff.
Sure.
As I understand it, if the CURA Consolidated Urban Revitalization Area stays as is with offering three years at 100% or 10 years at a graduated scale, the only options we have for CLURA is one of those or the other of those, or both. So to, to, to do a six years at 50% on CLURA, the only way to do that would be to also do an amendment to the CURA to provide that as a third... do an amendment to the Cura to provide that as a third option or as a replacement option to one of the existing ones there.
And, and that, that in itself could be done no, no different than how we're adding daycares to this.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I mean, you, you could go six, six years at, at 50% on the CLURA, you could go the three years at a hundred percent at a sliding scale or six years at 50% if you chose to do that under Cura.
Right.
And, and amend that portion of it.
Correct.
But I, I, you know, this, this board, board will make their recommendation and send it on to council, and then we'll, we'll see where it goes.
Obviously trying to encourage development and, and tax revenue.
But I truly believe.
Sorry, go ahead, Councilman.
I'm sorry, what was that, sir?
No, go ahead.
But I, I, I truly, I truly believe that, that, that it would help the, the, the owners of the homes as, as far as the sticker shock when they get their first tax bill. And it's a win-win for the city because we have money coming in right away. Or at least a year behind on the taxes, but it, it, it's a whole lot easier for, for us budgeting each year, knowing that these homes are all online, because we can't even get from the county what's coming on next year.
Right.
You know, and, and we're averaging somewhere between 30 and 40 homes a year coming online, you know, of, of which our share of those homes on an average is somewhere around, uh, $55,000 in, in taxable revenue to the city. But ha- had we had a program where we were getting money upfront for the first six years, and even at 50%, it would be easier, in my opinion, as, as a council person that has to work this budget, it would be easier for us to, to know what's coming in and what isn't. And, and that's why I proposed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bozen, appreciate that. Um, Commissioner Cho, I've got a couple, couple of questions. Do we have any data that, that tells us, are we, from a developmental tax revenue standpoint, does it put us at any kind of more of a disadvantage, obviously compared to our neighbors as far as incentives to build in Waterloo versus other communities? If we, if we go to a, um, graduated or go to a 50% for three years or six years, whatever it might be, do we have any information on that at all?
Not that I'm aware of. I, I know that, um, one of the concerns Noel mentioned on, um, eliminating the three years at a hundred percent, uh, option is whether or not it would provide less of an incentive for, uh, building here in Waterloo. And he noted that, uh, apparently Cedar Rapids has, uh, a similar revitalization plan that provides 10 years at 100%.
Des Moines, Des Moines does in their downtown as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Mr. Schrader, I believe that 10 years at a hundred percent was for multifamily dwellings in Cedar Rapids.
That could be, I'm, I am not familiar with it.
And that's, that's how Noel expressed that to me.
So if, this is Commissioner Wilbur, so if you do a 10-year at 50%, can the homeowner, homeowners, can they still, um, apply and qualify for other tax credits that they'd be with, I mean, with the county, like homestead tax, or like if they were a veteran or, I mean.
Yes, that.
To cover, and that would apply to.
This program does not impact other credits like homestead veterans.
Commissioner Cho, on the Cura, they have a choice right now, is that correct? They have, they can choose to do one or the other, so it's up to the, the developer, builder, whoever it might be, to owner to make that choice if they want to do the, the shock in so many years and do the 100% or take the, the 50% and, and graduate it, however they want to do it. It's, it's the 10-year graduated or it's the, what was the other one for Cura?
Three years at 100.
Three years at 100, so it's their choice how they want to do that. That'd be my question, is do we want to consider providing that same kind of a choice then?
I would like to.
To CLURA?
Is that choice though, when the house, or when the, the residence is constructed?
It is when they apply for their CLURA abatement. So, which would mean the house would need to be constructed at that point, um, certificate of occupancy, um, completed, and then they'll submit the form requesting the abatement. And in the Cura, they've got to pick that three years at 100 or the 10-year graduated schedule, and then that is reviewed and approved by the council and then forwarded on to the assessor's office to put it on to the tax rolls so that they get the abatement.
Commissioner Cho, I want another question. So if, if, if we were to come up with something different, say it's a six-year, does that then have, does the Cura then have to go back and be amended to allow that option also?
Yes.
And do we also have to adopt the 10-year option also? We have to have all three?
N- no, they just, whatever you're offering in one has to at least be an option.
Okay.
In the other, but you don't, yes, so no, you wouldn't have to.
But starting with the Cura, because right now you offer something in the Cura that the CLURA doesn't offer. So does the Cura start it, like, if that's the, you know what I'm saying? Because right now the Cura offers three and 10, but the CLURA doesn't follow that. You're saying they have to be the same? No, they don't have to be the same.
You just.
The Cura, right?
I'm, I'm following your, you know, I'm thinking.
Yeah, the Cura was adopted first with the two, and then when we adopted the CLURA, we had to either do the, the same or at least pick one of the two that were in there, yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I think it's because it was adopted first, so yeah, I guess it controls, but it can be amended, yes.
Okay. I mean, to me at a minimum, they should be the same, and the graduated option should be available. Um, but I, I mean, I agree with what he was saying too, the six years 50% sounds.
That raises another quick question for me, Commissioner Cho here. Um, there, there's a CLURA and there's a Cura. The Cura used to be a combination amalgamation of several that combined into one. And now we also have now a CLURA, so we're sort of expanding. Is it because of just different developmental needs, different incentives for the one being the central urban area and one being more a city limit area? Is that why there's a difference? So if you theoretically were to adopt the same incentives that are in the Cura with the, with the CLURA that we're talking about tonight.
Are you providing less of an incentive?
To build in the Cura.
Encouragement to build in the Cura, possibly. The, the 10-year prorated schedule does provide more incentive if you, I mean, obviously a variable, uh, on that, you know, three years at a hundred percent versus the 10-year, uh, schedule, uh, the variable that you don't know until it's all said and done is what the, um, tax levy rates are going to do. But assuming those as, um, constant, the, in the Cura, the 10-year prorated provides significantly more incentive than the three years at 100%. When you add up the amount of abatement you'll get, there is an incentive to pick that 10-year prorated scale.
This is Commissioner Cho, I just don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot, so to speak, when it comes to.
And, and.
Urban versus city limit areas and what those incentives, I guess my question would be if we were to amend something and vote on it and approve it here, what's, what are the next steps then for this? Does this go to council then?
Yes, it goes to council. If, if your recommendation includes something that would impact Cura, we'd have to look at that and potentially bring a Cura amendment back before you. But ultimately, it, yes, both would go to city council.
Is it, one more question for Commissioner Cho here. Is this something that could be tabled and then discussed between now and, and next month's P&amp;Z meeting, or is this something that?
Yes, uh, as you may recall, we, um, initially kind of discussed this several months ago and have been working towards getting it in front of you. Um, but it took a while to kind of get details worked out, like is the multifamily going to be included or not? The, uh, childcare, how to word that, that all kind of took a little while to get worked out. Um, the process of getting a, um, CLURA or Cura amendment to council is fairly lengthy, uh, because it involves the council taking action to set a date of hearing and then mailing notice to all property owners within the, uh, affected area, and then waiting a minimum of 30 days from when that notice is sent out to hold a hearing. And there's provisions that, uh, a potential petition could get filed forcing a second hearing another 30 days out from there. So there are, um, some time constraints issue, but at, at this point, um, if it was tabled and acted on at the next month's meeting, we would still be pretty good.
So it's best.
Because we're trying to get it done before the end of the year, before the current one expires.
It's best to have our ducks in a row though, because right now so far it's coming from the planning and zoning staff, correct?
Correct.
And so it's probably best to have a discussion, I would think, and then to have an honest discussion about what are some of the other changes and incentives that I think we're discussing here. And then having those incorporated come forward to our commission so that we can vote on what every, an agreement on.
Yeah.
That we're not hurting ourselves in the long run from an urban development standpoint also.
Yeah. I would like to see too, if we're going to have a further discussion, what the difference in the building, I don't, I know we saw for the, specifically for the CLURA, but what, how, how has the Cura and CLURA com- compared? Do you have stats on that?
Like number of, um, struc- number of applications.
Yeah, so to answer his question, is it actually incenting people to do that investment more over the CLURA? Is the Cura actually getting more investment?
I assume we have some tracking information on the Cura, I don't.
The Cura?
Yeah.
Yeah, so even like total investment dollars, number of projects, I mean, that would be really helpful, I think, to know if we're comparing, like, so to his point, do we think we're going to hurt investment over here if, if we incent them the same essentially? I think we need to know the numbers probably to know, have a better sense of making that decision, yeah.
Uh, this is Commissioner Lysikko. Uh, as Lea has done from the Community Development Board, we have just discussed the boundaries of the Cura district and obviously was if either or. So what we were kind of looking at was with the Cura district not really encompassing some parts where some homes are starting to get older, maybe we expand that because it, it makes people that live in that area or looking to move into that area that can qualify for, uh, down payment assistance. And I just kind of wanted to bring that up.
This is Schrader with staff, yeah, an amendment to the Cura boundary, um, would effectively cause an amendment to the CLURA boundary as well. Um, probably best if they were done at the same time, like an actual amendment to both, but the actual CLURA defines itself as all areas within the city limits of the city of Waterloo except, and then it uses a, a legal description that accepts out what's already in the Cura. So if we amended the Cura, yeah, we'd have to amend the CLURA, but we're talking about amending both anyway.
It seems like now's the time to do it and look at them, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, the three years at 50, or excuse me, six years at 50% was thrown out there. So I believe, I'd have to review this with the attorney's office, but I believe, for instance, if that abatement option was added to Cura, then it could be done as the only option in CLURA, for instance.
Either or.
Or it could be the only one, or it could be one plus the others.
One plus the others, yeah. But, but for instance, if, if we didn't, still didn't want to provide the 10-year because we're still trying to provide a slightly greater incentive for the.
Add one more option at least to CLURA if we added it into the Cura.
I think the whole purpose behind this discussion was to, like, like Commissioner Pear said and, uh, Councilman Bozen said, is to reduce some of that shock load of the tax payment and let them make the choice.
Yeah, and to bring in some revenue right away.
Correct.
Which I think is, and help in planning, which I think is useful as well.
So do we need to table?
Motion to table.
I make a motion to table the approval of the revised CLURA, uh, city limits urban revitalization area, um, and ask staff to have discussions regarding providing additional options as, as, uh, reviewed during this commission meeting, um, providing a, a six-year.
50%.
50%.
Option.
As one of the potential options, um, in addition to potential other options that are, are, um, developed or thought about.
Second that. Any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that item is tabled. Any other discussion items? The next meeting will be on September 13th. Um, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You have a second?
Cho.
All those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carried, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.